You're live.
Like in the middle would be kind of that's open there's perfect.
Let's hope that doesn't block it. Okay. All right, so it is six thirty on August eighth, twenty twenty four. We're gonna get this uh meeting started. This is uh another one of our budget workshops. So we'll start out with the indication.
Praise your heavenly Father. We're grateful for this meeting here tonight to discuss our city budget. We ask that you guide us to be good stewards of our city finances and that you lead us to make decisions that will benefit the endeavors towards progress and prosperity. Please watch over our city staff, crews, police, fire department, and our citizens. Keep everyone safe. May we feel your presence as we go about our daily lives. We ask all these things of Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody having announcements?
Plan tour Saturday morning, nine o'clock.
Plan tour?
There will be no developments provided and no comments.
Pulling out all the stops, are ya?
May.
B Y O C.
Also, uh do not forget that there's Moby's in the park on the tenth and Moby's in the park on the twenty fourth of this month. Uh let's see, we did have our auction and uh we will have results for you at the council meeting.
Was it all right?
Uh it's a couple of things were very surprising. Um a couple of things were not surprising. I think we ended up Kevin's word or Mayor's word we thought we would, right?
Yeah, I mean for the most part it did. Went off without a hitch, happened to be.
It's a good thing.
You ready? You all ready to announce what's free thing?
Uh applications for place on the ballot is deadline is the nineteenth, five ten.
Do we have any news yet?
We don't have any signed up. Give me one.
We don't have any, we don't have any signed up. But we've got uh place one for one year. We have place two. We have the mayor. And then we'll also have place four. Will be on ballot.
I'm sure some people are going to. What happens if we don't have?
There's a lot of people talking about doing it, but no one showed up yet to to do it. Usually it's a last minute situation.
You got an announcement?
Uh huh. On September the twenty first, that's a Saturday. The Green Bull Rotary, they do the Cotton Patch Challenge Bicycle Race at Crestwood Camp. And that's it's it's sounding like it's gonna be really big again this year. So every year they ask the city of West Wapahnee, since they're having it at the Chamber Building. They have a like a meet and greet, a rest stop there. So if anybody wants to bring like protein bars, snacks, anything like that, you can either bring them to City Hall and I'll come get them, or you can take them to the Chamber Building. We've always, we've always, and they always tell us at the end of the race that we are the best rest stop on their tours. And some, one of them, they increased to seventy-five miles last year. So by the time they get here, they are hungry, tired, and and hot, yes, amen. So anyway, that's happening on the twenty first of September. And they usually start coming through about nine o'clock. So John, I know you have your guys up there kinda watching and so anyway.
Uh I've got one more quick one. Uh Kevin Jennings and myself will be going to test again in the morning. And we've got Morgan, who is also a plant operator in training. Our application's been submitted, so we should be sending her to test pretty quick, so.
Good stuff. All right. If there's no more announcements, we'll move on to number five, citizens input.
Just scare everybody off.
Uh if you got any input, we're all citizens. Anyway, people do know they're citizens here. All right, well, I don't hear anybody, so we're gonna move right along. So we'll jump right into number six, budget workshop, water sewer. And then we'll go through the water sewer, then we'll move on to E D C. We'll get out the E D C.
Since we're starting with water sewer, um Mary has done an outstanding job at combining a lot of line items that we had talked about in the previous meeting. Um we also made sure to make the miscellaneous go away. It is no longer a part of this. Um and we did rename a few of them to be more appropriate to what that line item really is. So for instance, and she's highlighted it on your spreadsheet, recycling fees. So that was at one point Tom Other is now recycling fees. So um we've gone over this thing several times, she and I together, trying to find any errors, any mistakes. And we're pretty proud of this one. I think we're we're at a place where we're pretty secure in our numbers. We like what we see. There are a couple of places where I do have concerns. But as it stands, I think this is probably our our best well-balanced budget so far, so. And I'm ready for the partner squad whenever you guys are ready.
What are the new, what are the newer things? I mean, I know y'all coupled um those line items for the travel and all that kinda stuff.
Yes.
Um is there anything on here new that we did not go through last one?
Uh no, we just changed the name. Well, yeah, you're right. We added, we added safety. Um and then of course, everything highlighted is where we combine those line items because it makes sense to combine them. If it did not make sense to combine them, then we did not.
So that was the first one I had a note on. What is the safety?
Yeah.
Safety would be, you know, high vis vests when they're on the road, hard hats, safety gloves, safety glasses, things like that. And in the past, that's always come out of water maintenance and supply that shouldn't. It should have its own line item. So when we were trying to figure out what do we do with the other, that's what we did with it. Now you will see there are two others in there that we kept. One is supposed to be for Gatorade, water, things of that nature. Uh and the other one is still just other, whether that be, you know, taking them for shots or whatever it may be.
Did you add engineering?
We did add engineering, and the reason why we added engineering, we didn't talk about it on the first round. Uh but the council did approve the new comprehensive study. And they have been here in town uh looking at land use and and different things, roads. Anyways, we had talked about and the council had approved uh water sewer and general fund splitting the cost of that comprehensive plan. Well, there was no way to account for that money, so what we did is added an engineering line so that, for instance, water sewer, you can see what our contribution would be towards the comprehensive plan.
I know that we talked about that in twenty twenty-five. Were we doing it earlier in the year or during the year?
What originally you guys wanted was not to do it in this budget year that we're in currently. We wanted it to where it showed up at the beginning of the new budget year.
Yeah.
So their timeframe is to deliver it sometime between October and November, which means it would come out the new budget year.
Oh, let's see. Okay.
What was the total on that?
Twelve thousand, twelve thousand, so twenty twenty-five, something like that. It was twenty twenty-five thousand. Which we went ahead and put it down as twenty-five thousand and then split it between the two.
I guess I get it. Thinking about it, it's probably more like I said, about twenty-five thousand. There's more water sewer than there is roads.
You know, but you're not accounting for the new development. You're not accounting for E D C, planning and zoning, because all the different groups have their own tab and study and all that, population growth. So to me, fifty fifty is actually more than fair.
Is there any more talk, side note, of that development that's going in on the lake next behind the donut shop?
Absolutely.
Just turning that into, because I I drove over there the other day, so I know they're doing a lot of work, but.
They've got it open right now. Now, you know, they're obviously not wanting a lot of traffic through there.
Right, but like annexing it into the city, because isn't that still?
We want to talk about that on a different note.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I was asked about that recently.
No, we don't get too far out and weeds and talk about things that we don't have mentioned. Um okay, so anybody got any other questions? Does everybody understand it?
Yes. Well, again, you know, the ones that were combined are gonna look like numbers you've never seen before, but that's because the two are combined, so it's gonna look like.
I did when I did, whenever I combined them, I did the actuals. I didn't go and combine last year's budget and this year's budget. I just did our actual just for quick math functions. So you can see where they're trending at.
I didn't, honestly, I did not compare it to the last one, so you know. This is all what we talked about.
They're gonna have uh fresh copies of P and L's in their regular meeting papers.
Yeah, and and this this won't be anything, this won't be anything that's gonna be super approved or approved, I guess you'd say. Because obviously, we've gotta go through the others and make, see what causes and effects are, right? Water and sewer does stand on its own. We don't have it down to that for us to say, yes, we're good for this because we do wanna see it come back as the finish without without showing this is gone, that's gone, whatever, right?
Yeah.
So we will get it back and to approve it. And at that point, I'm sure you're gonna go through and count the numbers one last time and make sure that we didn't make a mistake because we probably did. Over here, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just thinking, this is probably the most we've ever cut. For me, this is the most I've ever gone over a budget before coming to you guys. I mean, I feel like we're getting better over here.
It's been great the past few years, right?
Yes. What are you doing? Change this? Why are you doing that? Yeah. So I kinda know what to expect when I come up here.
And kinda the budget, I think, um you know, Chris, this is your, what?
Six.
Six, six, coming up on sixth year or will the end of next year would be the sixth year? Leon, you've been involved with with the council for how long?
Hundred eight years. Quite some time, but you know, and I and I could be wrong, but looking back and and talking to different people, I think there's always been, um monies moved around, but there's never actually been budget amendments, kinda like what we just did.
Which is, which is what you're supposed to do, right?
You're supposed to amend the budget and say, hey, we screwed up, we need to amend this. And that's what we did. We came back, we licked our wounds, said, look, here's what, here's what we messed up. We have to change this. We're gonna make an amendment. And and so I think that's a growing moment for us as a city and the council. But uh I like, I I like what we're doing. Um again, I can't wait to see it without all the colors and without all the this and.
Yeah, it's normal.
Yeah, so so I can dig the one final last time because I know Mary will, you will, we all will. And you know, hopefully we just didn't, didn't miss anything. And if we didn't, then that's gonna be miraculous, right?
Well, again, I think every year, at least, you know, since I've been here with you guys, we there have been mistakes along the way that we've made change after change after change.
I know that this city halls had to print a bunch of P and L's in the past.
Right.
Three or four years. I don't know that that's always been that way. But it's it's been hyper-focused by many.
Yeah.
And I think that's what helps too, that's including yourself. All right, anybody got any questions? Concerns?
No, not about the water one.
I wanna take a few, few minutes and scan through this real quick, because I know y'all are just now seeing this. I think, did you even know that you? No, the water sewer.
I did, I did earlier.
Earlier?
Yeah.
So for the most part, you're probably all just now getting sent down.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was saying, is I didn't, since I didn't compare it to the last one, like I don't, I just, you know, it looks like just y'all coupled everything and then we just talked about the addition.
Yeah, there's only a couple of changes um on page three. We made a couple of changes after we changed the water maintenance supplies.
One, two, six, nine, one, four, one.
And then on page four. On the ground storage, I, that is going to be the exact amount that'll be paid. I'm actually able to go through the paperwork. I'm still looking at the other loans and such that we have. Uh it's been a project in its own located paperwork.
It's been learning experience, right?
Absolutely.
What is the ground storage? Did we talk about that last?
Water tank, the big water tank.
You're gonna learn that Saturday.
You're gonna actually see it.
I'm excited.
Only got twenty seventeen.
What?
That was part of another loan when we rehabbed, we built a new north tower and the south tower was rehabbed, which unfortunately, the rehab didn't work out on the old ground storage, so now that's a part of this this next one. They're gonna try to fix the issues with it.
Did we get actuals on the sewer line improvement?
What number?
One, two, six, eleven forty-five dash, or is that one?
Which page?
Sewer line, this is on the original budget.
We have not had time to sit in, come through each one.
No, we still need to, yeah.
Yeah, so if you will just make a note that when we do bring this back to council for approval, we do wanna make sure that we do have actuals on every line.
Yeah, every line, yes.
Well, it's gonna, I mean, obviously, we wouldn't all be doing our due diligence if we accepted it without that. So we need to be able to compare the actuals because that's the only way to forecast, you know, what we're doing. Um because if we, if we, if we say a number and then we turn around our actuals this much, we end up doing that right in next year. Now we're making a budget improvement again, right? But yeah, we just, we wanna make sure all the actuals are there on this next um meeting that we have. I don't think we're gonna try to throw any of this on the next week's meeting. We're gonna have three years to. And I think that was the meeting that we're gonna have to reschedule now.
Um yeah, um point enough. The twenty first. So we have one on the twenty first. That's the one I cannot go to.
So we didn't schedule one for next week?
No, y'all, y'all talked about it, but you just kept it one meeting to each week.
Can we do any of the smaller ones after the council meeting or before?
I mean, he's saying the council meeting.
Oh, oh.
Well, and and it may not, it's just gonna have quite a few lines on it, because there were, there were quite a few things that were in the background that we needed to have. As far, there was, there's lots of notes that this stuff needs to be on the next council meeting. It's not really anything that's.
Something lengthy, I don't know what to say.
Maybe, maybe we can blow right through it, but.
So the twenty first, we're doing or not doing?
Not sure, we're not.
I will be available, so um.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I'm not opposed. If you guys wanna try to put one, like I say, next Thursday, that would just make us have two meetings in one week. We've done it many times.
I'm good with that. So we can be ahead of schedule.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Fourteenth and fifteenth, I can be here.
Oh, no. Twenty second was when y'all were going somewhere, right?
Uh actually, we're not leaving until the twenty third.
Twenty, yeah, twenty third, four.
So do you want to try to do one that evening?
I'm being admitted to the hospital that week.
Oh, you'll be in hospital.
So I will be.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Can we do two in one week with that, could everybody, like we did one on Tuesday, the twenty seventh? Will that give you another time to?
We can.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be fine. I just have to have a chest run.
Yeah, we can do two, we can do two in one week without an issue. I mean, in all reality, it would be up to you. We could, I went into, I could donate to him Monday of the of next week. You do it before the council meeting.
I will spend that thing. I can't do, I can't do that.
It would be the twelfth.
Before the council meeting?
Council meeting's on thirteen.
No, we have four meetings.
Oh, you have one, okay. We've done, we've done them before. I just like to stay away from it.
Well, I mean, we're not voting on anything next, that week of the twenty first, you'll have to do without me.
That's entirely up to you. I mean, we technically legally, we can, um but I would rather.
I was gonna ask, when do you plan on doing any voting to secure whichever one? Would it be the last week of August? Are we trying to go into September like last year?
I would like not to. I would like to seal this thing up by the last week in August. I mean, if we could, if we could get another meeting scheduled now, um we should go and get ran through, you know, we'll do E D C tonight. We can go through all the other little ones in that next meeting.
We could just stick with the twenty ninth, August twenty ninth, and then roll one that first week of September.
We know general fund's gonna be, I'm not sure it's all as well.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna probably, it's gonna take a meeting or meeting and a half.
Yeah.
So um.
And then another one to approve it.
So do y'all have something on twenty sixth and twenty seventh?
We have something on twenty sixth. I did, in the age, yeah.
About the twenty seventh?
No, we don't have anything. Don't we have anything twenty seventh or twenty eighth?
Twenty seventh, I don't have anything. Twenty seventh, good.
I mean, that gives you two in that, that last week of August.
That would, that, and we might seal the deal.
Twenty seventh and twenty ninth.
Check, can you do that?
Yeah.
So we're doing it?
Six thirty good for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody got any other questions on this?
No, I mean, for me, I just wanna spend time comparing them. So I can ask my questions either offline or like I can see.
By all means, Bill.
Yeah.
Feel good then. I mean, if you got a question and you'd like to get answered, then you need to call up here.
Yeah.
Or email, whatever. Sometimes that helps and you can have your answer already and you're good.
Would you have these put together before the next meeting?
Uh the water sewer one?
Yeah. Okay, you can put it in our package and then she can go over and ask any questions she want.
Yeah, you can do that or you can just email her.
Well, that's what I'm.
Okay, so we wanna move over to E D C? Hi Pam. I I was thinking about going now, but I was like, eh.
I know, I didn't know where we'd get out.
Like a quite a bad idea. I'm just giving that big, Pam, she gave me a break one last time. All right.
I'm gonna close up my computer, because I can read it better than I can here.
How's Kim?
Do y'all have any, anybody got any questions? We can get, please start going down through these. Got something we need to get answered from she right there, she can answer.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to present or. I guess probably I just have some questions on some short shorthand, like repayment of loans, C O W T. What does that mean?
That is the city loan that they took out for the road. And um this next year, they only have a few payments that will, it'll be paid off.
The city took out a loan against the E D C?
This, no, the city took out a loan from the E D C for roads.
Okay.
Years ago, and they've been paying on it steadily. And that for the years. And it's coming to last payments in November.
Of this year, oh, good, okay.
So that was, yeah.
That was for Rabbit Cove, if I remember right. There was a, there was a gap in the money that was had for Rabbit Cove.
There's, it was a matching grant, wasn't it? Is that, I mean, it was a matching loan.
There was that.
It was a loan and a grant, right.
It was also to try to get it stretched up a little bit more, because it wasn't even gonna get probably half, half what they did.
Yes.
So it worked out pretty good.
And I know that there's nothing on uh line item for other revenues, but that's kind of like a miscellaneous, so what was that?
That's if we happen to get revenues from some of their stores, like someone makes a donation. Or in this particular instance, the reason we had that down there last year is that uh we gave the loan to Fat Cats and they paid that much back to us and it's going under other revenue, because we did not have a line item for it at that time.
Pam, where do you think the additional sales tax is gonna come from?
Well, we're gonna be finishing up this year the um property across the way here. Uh we're looking at probably three months out and they'll be, they'll have their building done. And then after that, the hotel, it's gonna go up over there. Should be pretty close after that, so.
We're real in the creek, I'm right?
Yeah, yeah. Fish and water creeks rising, trying to get it in, but we're getting there.
Was uh on the fish and nutrition, was there any money ever paid back on that one?
Not at the time. And according to the lawyer, he said it's not worth per se.
How much money was that?
I'll tell you real quick.
Pam, wasn't there a payment made on that, the very first payment?
Yeah, the very first payment we made, yeah. But that's it.
So there, that, so there is, there is something that could be in an actual there, right? That's what you're saying?
Last year.
It wasn't this current budget?
This year.
Was it twenty-two? Twenty-two, twenty-three, okay.
Yeah.
I think it's already been that long.
Yeah, it's been that long.
I'm glad I said yes.
I'm gonna come over this way so I can see you, ready? Um I think.
You need my reading glasses.
It's okay, I got it.
You borrow mine if you need them. They're strong. What'd you, what'd you say?
If I made them, I'll break them.
Okay.
Yeah.
He was looking up fishing nutrition, threw it wrong out. So when you got under projects.
Hold on a minute, let me get this. I'm sorry guys, it's not gonna let me do it because the air is hitting here.
Do you need the password to the new one?
Maybe.
That'll probably help, 'cause I'm getting good speed. I'm on how to. That would be for whatever that is.
Yeah, I need bar and glasses.
Are they all tied? They're tied on me too.
My last trip, I told you how much it was, I can't remember that far back. I'm sorry, I'll have to look it up later, I can't take it off. Yeah, it was about $3,500 that we gave them. Yeah. Yeah, it was something like that that we lost, but like I said, lawyers all say that it's not worth per se, because it's a tiny small amount. Yeah. And that's, you know, so far gone in the back, but it's not gonna make much difference.
So under projects, 11 dash 13 dash 21.
We only page one or two?
Page two, I knew that was gonna be a question. 4A, 4B projects.
What's that?
4A and 4B projects. That's what we help businesses. Everything that will be on there will have to come through you guys. For approval, what we, we pay on that. We're just allowing enough on our budget that if we have some things we can do.
Right.
Will do.
I was just looking at overall, there's a $23,000 increase between all three categories there.
Yeah, it is. And I, I question, I had it less whenever I brought it to my board, and they wanted to go up.
So we're just being optimistic, there's really nothing in the, nothing in the works, so to speak, maybe some, I'm sure, but.
There's nothing currently, right now. But there is potential for some things this next year. And we'll, we'll strive to get something else over here. That we may need some of those business incentives for.
Do y'all have anything planned specifically with the building for this upcoming year?
Okay, so, our building, the front part of it had a six inch sinking on one side of the building this last year. Which is a huge amount of sinkage.
From the water behind it?
Yeah. So, we've talked about tearing the building down, putting a new one up. And if we do that, we'll have to get some environmental study or something out there to see why sinking's going on. That much in a year is a lot.
So is the goal just to kind of let it be for the time being?
Let it be right now. The back part of it didn't sink. So, we may be able to retain the back part of it, and maybe just for a storage kind of area. But as far as the front part of the building, it's gonna have to come down eventually.
Wasn't too expensive, the new foundation work?
Yeah.
That, that has all been explored and looked at?
Yeah. The, and we're looking at it even more, we've got kind of a committee that's going out looking at it even more, but kind of what they said was that it would cost probably as much to fix the foundation and do the renovation as it would to build a whole new building.
But some of the renovation is already done, right, outside, outside.
All we've done is painted, we've painted and fixed three, that's all we've done. Just to make it look nicer than.
It's kind of borrowed that money with me. Kind of wasted, yeah, wasted out the window. I would hope to see if we can save that, I mean, I don't know what amount of money that is.
It wasn't very much that we spent on roof and, and painting, you know, so it was, it was worth it to have it look nicer.
Well, and I guess, I guess if we're being honest, not just the amount of that money spent to do whatever remodeling we did, the buying of it as well, right, 'cause you couple that with.
But the property is worth more than the building.
Oh no, and I get that, no, I get that.
The city needs that property, because it's right on the road with the park. We don't want anything.
The best thing y'all ever did.
Yeah, I would love for us to hang on to it.
I don't disagree with that.
Downtown area.
Yeah.
I just hate to see money go away if we tear it down, that's.
Is it, is it unsafe that, like, it's cooler?
There's one law, because of it sinking on that one side.
Yeah.
That, that we're worried that it may eventually fall.
Okay, so it's not something like, you know.
We don't have to do it immediately, there's no immediate danger. We could use it as storage if we needed to, you know, but we just can't have a lot of people in it right now.
Okay.
You know.
I was thinking like if there were some events or something opening the doors, or just having people come in and out.
I don't think I would.
Is the largest part still okay?
The largest part's the front, it's sinking. The, the back part is, you know, it's a range bigger than this one, and it's in good shape.
That is.
So is it possible to tear the front part off and keep the back part?
Yes.
And make a smaller building?
Yes. But there's no room for like a back frame and all the things you'd have to have to have people come into that room.
Right.
That building, there's no.
There's something, something else we could use.
Yeah.
Maybe somebody give a different opinion, you know, you can get three different people involved, so then all three people have a different.
Yeah, we, we had three different subcontractors come out and get it, and one actually had six, but anyway.
I mean, I, I don't see a problem, like you said, just sitting on it because of the value of the property.
Right.
So, and it looks good, 'cause y'all did some cosmetic stuff, just sits there and not used, you know.
Well, and the value of the property's gone up since we bought it.
Yeah, I imagine.
You know, we've gone up $20,000 since we bought it.
And the good news is we don't have to pay any property taxes?
Well, we pay some property taxes on it.
On the building?
But not all the, down the building.
So, since there's an issue there, I know there's some property adjacent to that, that's, that's part of that whole package there. Is there issues there with drainage, maybe if something were ever built there in the future, that that could happen there too?
We, that's what, we need somebody to come in and study that.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll need to do something along, along those lines to see what the problem was.
Does it drainage, you think that's what it is, like we're speculating or?
It's a low lying area number one, and the park is also.
Right, yeah.
I think, I think.
There's a car wash right next to it, and the dents are still there.
Right.
I, I think the biggest problem with the front of that building was, over time, nothing was done, it wasn't regular.
Right.
So then you, and you had all your erosion, and you had all your silting that came in, and the water wasn't, did we get away from it? What I'm, what my hope would be is, somebody will come in and say, "Look, we can, we can redo the drainage for this land drain like it's supposed to, repair this foundation right here, and then you can be good to go." I just, I don't want to see it go away, hopefully, hopefully we can save it, and then life will be healthy.
Hopefully we can get to the point where we work on a bigger vision, where it's, we can use that entire strip for downtown.
Well, yeah, and that, that's really kind of what we'd like to see happen. It's a new building that looks nicer, that goes that whole strip. That we have like a community center in it, and, and offices. That's what we.
There are a lot of smaller cities that, 'cause they don't have a true downtown, it's just, you pull out. You got your several buildings, and then you pull back.
That, yeah, and that's the, that's the goal eventually, is that kind of thing.
Since we're a little, we're a little low, I mean, the property's almost not.
We might have to check with right now.
Quite big enough to do that, so.
I, it's, it's a lot bigger than you think, it goes all the way to.
I know I made it, I mowed it, I mowed it several times on my tractor.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty big there.
Yeah, but some, but none of the projects that you guys have potentially slotted is for the building, you are just gonna sort of.
No, that goes under a whole different category, that, that would be under capital cost.
Okay.
The building goes under capital cost.
So your projects are really incentives?
Intentives. Yeah, for businesses in town.
So the only thing that could fall under the building probably would be that $25,000, really. About $25,000, I'm sorry.
$25,000 if we tear it all down. And we're not, we're putting it in the budget, but that doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna be used it. It may sit on your problem.
I will just, um, 'cause we talked about it at our last meeting for water, so I'll just say it again here too. Like you have on the front page, interest income, that's whatever you're getting from the bank, I'm assuming, interest. My recommendation would be for y'all to look at money market accounts, or things that have a higher yield, so y'all can make a little bit of money there. Because y'all have enough money in the bank that you should be cashing in more than $10.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but you know, the city controls that account, so city would have to be the one to do that.
Well, the, the council would approve it. I mean, the council, brought your council to approve, so what she's saying is just a, a smart business.
I agree, I agree.
If there's no risk, get it to us. Money market, you talking about?
Yeah, no, they just, they fluctuate with the market though, so like, like, you know, they're paying 6%, which is really great. You know, when we get out of recession, we'll probably pay less, so it's kind of like, you have to sort of just be aware and move the money around as you see it, but it's not, no, there's not a risk.
There is one line I would like to tell you about. Power restroom.
On the front page?
Uh, some second page. Uh, power restroom, we have some money down here that we are going to hire someone to come out, and.
It's on our first page?
It's on our first.
Oh, we saw your first, sorry. We're gonna hire someone to come out and power wash the bathrooms once a month. Because they are nasty, filthy, dirty. And every time that I go by, and every time anyone else goes by, they talk about how nasty, dirty, filthy our restrooms are. And I know that they were cleaned up at one time, because when we had the repairs done, they were cleaned really well at that time. So, it's just a matter of, apparently, we don't have enough help to keep them clean. And so we're going to take one to be power washed once a month.
Is that an actual, like, porta potty service? Because I remember when we talked that Monday, and then I just didn't do anything with it.
It's not a porta potty service, this is the actual bathrooms.
Yeah, no, 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 who's cleaning, who's doing the power washing?
We haven't hired anyone yet, but that's the going rate, so that's the reason we've got it in our budget. And, of course, we will have the money to ensure you approve our budget to do that.
Um, so, this might be my question too, I know that the EDC put some money into some issues with the bathrooms, but I understand there's still some issues with the bathrooms, have we talked about that recently?
I think he, I think we had a picture.
We got a door, we got a door to the dungeon yet.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought Mike said there were still some outstanding things.
A door to the dungeon.
Yeah, we, we paid for the repairs for all the toilets and sinks and dryers.
Right. So we didn't have to spend that zillion dollars on that electronics stuff.
Yeah, and I, I think there were some underlying things that ended up not getting completed, but they had, he had somebody, they had somebody come out and get that done as well.
The only thing that we didn't do was the showers. But we did everything else in the bathroom.
But they're, they're fully functional.
Yeah, I don't think there's any problem with that.
To my knowledge, like, a month ago, or maybe, it might have been two months ago, time flies, but they were fully functional then. We did, the city had a plumber come out.
There's one of the hand, the hand dryers that's been vandalized and it's not working.
And, and that, that is our biggest challenge. You know, and, and I'll, I'll be honest with you, that's also the biggest challenge with them, staying clean. I think, are you talking about power washing the outside?
I'm talking about going in the bathrooms and power washing it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I've been up there on, like, say, Monday, and then you're there on Thursday, and somebody has to totally made it look like it did on the Monday.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a constant battle, I mean, because people are just, I guess, careless.
So what if you did something like, when, once you get them all clean, say you clean them all once, say you do them on Monday. Leave one of them unlocked, lock the other three. Go up there on Wednesday and lock the one you, then you did, and open up a, a clean one. And, and just leave one open at a time?
Well, I think they've been doing that some, and from what I understand, from what I've heard, is that they're going down there twice a week to try to clean them. But you know, there's stuff, when people smoo, when people smear their excrement on the walls, you're not gonna have that cleaned as well unless you power wash it. And that's the reason we're talking about power washing.
And everybody's definition of clean is different.
Yeah.
You know, most, most men would probably not say anything about some of the stuff in there. But a woman would go in there and turn around and run. You know, that's not clean like I was.
It would be costly, but have y'all ever talked about putting, uh, you have to pay, you have to pay, whether it's a decent or something on there?
I don't think we can do that with a park. That was, that was one of the issues we were talking about, and one of the other functions that was happening for a payment, like pay level and pay mark.
Well, I don't think you have to give restrooms, you don't have to, you don't have to supply restrooms, so I don't know why we would be able to. The costs.
You know, when I was a kid, I loved fields, I used to spend time, I used to stall.
Yeah, well, it's done, it's done all over the world, like, public areas, you have to.
I mean, it's probably something we can check into.
Well, if we keep the people that don't, that live around there, they go over there and do.
Well, I've been asking for that for years, to, to make it to where you have to pay to go into it.
You gotta set up yet.
It's the first time I ever heard it.
Before we could do that, we'd have to be able to have a way that would automatically lock the doors and unlock them with payment and.
Yeah, and it would be an investment.
And the doors would have to be moving smoothly, you know.
There would be a pass system that would have to be installed. But, oh yeah, she was talking about, they've got $1,800 in their budget for park restroom repair. And what that's actually for is, once a month, they're gonna have some, a company come out and power wash.
And clean.
Well, you know, we power wash it every single Friday, every Friday, and by Saturday night, you know, the weekends, we can power wash it on a Friday and come in on a Monday, and it's a complete disaster, which is why for years ago we started limiting the number of bathrooms we had open. If it was an event, all four, no event, just regular weekend, two. So, oh yeah, it was one year.
It was going for a while, and you're not talking about. It was one for a while, and you're not talking about that.
And it worked. It worked great, it just hadn't won. Unless there was a birthday party that we didn't know about, and then they would complain that only one was.
Well, it is what it is. We, I think, on the general, just like Leon was saying, and you and I talked about this probably a year ago when we first did some repairs to them, is, I think we unlock one, and, you know, we come up and open the next one and clean that one, and we leave, leave that one that we just opened, leave it open. And then you just rotate yourself around every time.
It worked. I thought it was effective. And if you guys remember, at the end of last summer, we took a lot of heat because we were doing that, and there were some conversations that, you know, hey, why don't we try opening all the bathrooms again? But I would also bring up the fact of, you know, taking revenue in at the bathrooms, I did bring this up a couple of years ago, and when we started looking into it, because it's taxpayer funded, there was a lot of hurdles we would have to go through to make that work. You, you couldn't just put that in there. Like, there's, there's all kinds of things that have to happen first. So, and I believe one of those was a vote on it, to do it.
I'm sure there's ordinance.
Yes.
Oh, they did, be handicapped and everything else.
Right.
That's true.
They probably are.
But yeah, that, that, I want to make sure you knew that that was the plan that they had, that we had somebody once a month come up and power wash restrooms.
Right, that sounds great. I just wanted to remind you guys, we do it every single Friday.
But we need, um, I think we've talked about the doors as well, the one door is messed up.
And when we looked into that, uh, last year, uh, the, we had a couple of people come out and look at it, and they said that the entire door frame had to come out, even the cinder blocks, all that had to be cut out, rebuilt with the jam built into it and concreted. And for just one door, it was like a thousand, just for a door.
But that's the external door to go in the toilet?
Yeah, to, to get into the bathroom.
So do y'all just keep that one closed and locked?
Well, most of the time we do, but you know, if there's a lot of things going on in the park, we'll open it, and then, you know, if we're not disciplined enough to go back that very next morning and close it and lock it, then people hang on it, swing on it, and be surprised what people will do.
I mean, because if someone uses it to try and go in the bathroom, and then someone with ill intent goes in there and there's rape or something that happens, the city's liable for that.
If the door's broke, I would just completely shut it off until we can fix it.
Good.
I mean, if it's broke, it's broke, it's not usable. You can't go in there and lock yourself in because you couldn't get out.
You can, it actually closes, so when you go inside, it's not visible around the edge or anything. It, it just doesn't fit up into the frame is what.
You can close it, and we've been able to lock it. The problem is, is you can't get it unlocked sometimes, and you're trapped in the bathroom.
When he wants to be trapped.
Right. We need to close that one up, but, but we do need to make it a point at least to go ahead once a month.
Yeah, and we need to look at fixing it if it's only a thousand, but.
Yeah.
No, we have, out of the four doors, three of them needed to be redone. So at that time, it was around three grand to do three doors.
Is that just because of the ground shifting?
No, vandalism.
Vandalism. We've, we've caught some of our town's finest with crowbars, trying to, when we had the doors locked. The whole reason we had to put locks and latches is because they took crowbars and pried the door open so that they could get into the bathroom, which messed up the door jam, the door, the hinges, so. We've even seen them use one of those big flathead screwdrivers. And when we catch them, of course, we catch them and, and run them off, but, or call our police, you can let him know.
I've actually caught people up there that will drive up in their car, and I have, I have very much sympathy for them that are living out of their vehicles, that are using those bathrooms to shower and doing one thing. I mean, I've been there several times.
We know of three, three families, uh, that are doing that right now, and they wait till all of the sleeves in the afternoon to go up there and do that.
All right, so any other questions on the EDC budget? I guess the one we had was the fish and nutrition amount. I think y'all came up with pretty close how much that loan was.
And it's, it's set far in past, it's not even a date with it. So it's, it's a remaining line.
And the tax revenue, I mean, just gotta hope we can get there.
Damn, I would, it's my thought on that power washing. If, if they're doing it once a week, I wouldn't pay anybody to come do it once a month.
I mean, you could go on a Friday afternoon and look for yourself. You'll see it's power washed.
I mean, if they're doing it, we can take that out.
Uh, you done nine, nine minutes?
Yeah. I'll stick it on the. How about, we need it over to you.
And it, it only takes one day going to mess it up.
Right.
Yeah.
An hour probably.
Yeah, I've got a phone call on a Saturday morning asking why the bathrooms weren't clean. Turns out, people were trying to get in those bathrooms overnight, so.
So shouldn't we lock them up overnight?
Well, if we have anyone tent camping, or if we have an RV there, we can't do that, and they know that. They know if they see an RV sitting out there.
Leave one, leave one of them open anyway.
Yeah.
I think one would be plenty. I mean, you'd be at five camps out there, one would still be plenty.
I agree with that.
Do we have someone that's?
Are we going to keep part of our folks living out there again?
We should leave it there and fix one of the doors.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Ain't getting fixed the door.
Instead of going to that, put a door, fix the door.
Leaving the same price there and we'll fix the door.
The door is a restroom repair.
Yeah.
You can get with Mike, maybe, maybe make more than one there.
Maybe we can get at least two of them.
Well, I mean, every day, you might be able to get with, you know, a local business owner. I don't know if you guys have anything going on. We have one business owner that's, that does welding. You know, EDC might could say, hey.
Yeah.
Scratch our back, we'll scratch your back, whatever.
I'll, I'll reach out to the same, same folks and see if I can get you some quotes.
Have you ever had a worker look at that door?
One time, a couple of years ago.
He said it can't be fixed?
He said the entire thing, it'd be tore out, re-mortared, re-bricked.
I'm just thinking.
Now, he did give us a fair price. He's local. He gave us a real fair price on the welding part of it. But it's still, he needed a masonry to come in and actually.
Will that fix the sensor on the door that when you open and shut it, it turns the light off and on?
No.
That's, that's actually a switch.
It is, and if you've noticed, we replaced two of them. And the only way we could do it was to have the, so now they're pulling on the pull string, trying to. But usually what they'll do is they'll gum up those sensors. Uh, four or five years ago, they were spray painting them, so.
They're really not, or any value to you to disagree with our thing?
Well, I think if we can somehow find a way to not just make them secure, but make it to where it has, and not because we want the revenue, but because someone who needs to use that bathroom, that I, I think you're gonna stop a lot of the walkers going in those bathrooms. So, but the problem with that is, is they always, you know, if we catch them doing something wrong, the citizen, I pay taxes, you know.
So, yeah, that's, but that's a hill. That's a hill to climb another day, for sure.
And they prove it by driving licenses.
We have, we have, we have park money as a whole. So we just, we can talk about that, so we'll leave that there, and maybe between general fund, and then we can couple together and get those fixed.
Get it all.
The other thing we gotta realize is there's gonna be other repairs at the restaurants throughout the year.
Yes.
All right. So we're gonna leave that there where it was at. Another question I asked, I don't think most, maybe I might ask something. Uh, the tax thing, you good rolling the dice on the tax, on the, on your tax bill, right?
I, yeah, I, I think we'll see that though, because we're just from what we've taken in this year. I think it will be pretty close to that.
Okay. Any other questions on the EDC?
Glenn, Pammy, you wanna talk about how we changed the name from other to projects? We'll see, on eleven thirteen one oh one, it was other, and then it was listed underneath projects and then other projects. So I suggested we change the, not the name in general to project, so then it kinda has, makes a little.
Makes more sense that you know what, what it's for.
What the whole category is for.
Yeah.
Okay. So the other will be gone?
Yeah.
Well, the, so the actual title of the whole category itself, so we're up at like AKA other. If that's what it was, then that'll be projects. The, the one that said, the one oh one, that one is.
It'll stay projects, either.
Yeah, it'll be projects that don't fall into the four A, four B category.
I thought it was just easy for three hours of understanding, like if it's tore, we could.
Got a motion? I got a second.
Oh, second.
Motion made by Chris to a giant second by Jack.
Jack got a cuddle. I just.
Say the whole thing. All right, we're done at seven thirty.